Being here in our first order of business, we're going to have our invocation with Pastor Nikki Waters of Poohby's Chapel Baptist Church, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Robbie Wilkie will lead us in that. So Pastor.
Okay, let's pray together, and part of this prayer comes from Psalm forty-six one, where the Bible says, "God is our refuge and strength, and a very present help in trouble." We've all been very blessed over these last few weeks, not only to see the things we've seen go on through the hurricane, but to be able to watch a community come together in a great way and supporting one another. So let's pray together. Father, we love you, and we give you praise today, God, for being so good to us. Lord, I thank you for your blessings upon our county. God, thank you, Lord, for our leaders. God, we pray for your blessing upon them, God, as they navigate through these times. And Lord, I pray, God, that you would just bless everyone, God, in this room, and Lord, in our county, and Lord, that we've been blessed together, Lord, as a community, God, to come together, Lord, in such a time as this, Lord, to find your strength and to find your help, Lord, not only to help ourselves and to help our neighbors and our friends, God, but to reach out throughout our communities and throughout our counties, God, in west of here. And Lord, I just want to thank you for that. God, may you lead us and guide us and help us, Lord, to realize what you are showing us today is, God, what your word says, and that is to love thy neighbor as thyself. Lord, may we continue to support one another, encourage one another, work together, God, and be one in unity, Lord, that we may help our fellow man. God, thank you for all you're doing in our county. God, thank you for your love in our life, and thank you, God, for your blessings. May you lead us and guide us in everything we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. If I may, item six, ordinance for nuisance abatement. There's still some procedural matters we want to attend to on that, so we'd like to delete that and replace that with a letter request from Republic Services about tonnage in the landfill. And then let's bump up to item number one, and the presentation recognition of retirees will be part B, and then I'd like to add a part A, a resolution recognizing special guest.
All righty. All right. Anybody have any questions on our amendments to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda as been presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Any other discussion or question? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So we appreciate that. And our first item under 1A is a resolution, and this gentleman happens to be here this evening, and he opened us up in our prayer. And so Pastor Nikki Waters, we are going to adopt a resolution here this evening in honoring you. And I don't know when you want to come up for that. You might want to just come to the podium now as I read this, and then we're going to come down there and present it to you, okay? Pastor Waters has been very gracious and one of our leaders during this time and during the hurricane response, and has really rounded up a lot of community involvement, specifically with the churches. And it doesn't go unrecognized. And we wanted to do something since you were going to be here tonight in honor of that, and just to say thank you for everything you've done, Nikki, and we really appreciate it. And so I'll read the resolution. The resolution says, "Whereas Nikki Waters graduated from Westland North School of Ministry in nineteen ninety-one with a Bachelor of Divinity and Christian Education, and whereas Pastor Waters became the pastor of Poohby's Chapel Baptist Church in June of nineteen ninety-six, where he has led the congregation for the past eighteen years, and whereas Pastor Waters is a dedicated member of the community and currently serves as the chaplain for Hudson Fire Department and as the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Hudson Fire Department, and whereas on September the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, Caldwell County was heavily damaged by Hurricane Helene, which left several citizens without power, food, water, and other basic needs, and whereas after seeing the great needs of his community, Pastor Waters worked with several individuals and organizations to provide relief in the form of debris cleanup, organizing volunteers, donation coordination, and other forms of relief efforts, and whereas the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners would like to honor Pastor Nikki Waters for his outstanding response to his community during this time of need, and now, therefore, be it resolved, that Caldwell County Commissioners thanks Pastor Nikki Waters for his commitment to the citizens of Caldwell County and the citizens of western North Carolina, and commends him for the tremendous outpouring of generosity displayed during this time of distress." So I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Any other questions or comments?
I'll say one thing. Within less than twenty-four hours after asking Pastor Waters help, we had, I believe it was forty-two churches respond to our community needs for distribution and collection of items to be donated for those folks. This is a tremendous, tremendous group. It's fantastic.
And I'll echo that, Nikki. We couldn't have done it without, we could not have done it without you, and it's greatly appreciated, my friend. Thank you for all you've done, and we'll continue to do it.
Thank you for being salt and light in this community. Thank you, sir.
I can all see it on your face how happy you are to have done this much for people. Appreciate all the churches that contributed, but it takes leadership, and we appreciate you stepping up.
Thank y'all. We had a, I mean, like you said, we had an outpouring of people ready to, ready to do something in our community, and so thank you for all the opportunity you gave us to coordinate together and watch, just watch people love each other and share the love of Jesus and help our community.
Yes, sir. So I'll call the question. All in favors of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And I ain't even gonna ask about opposing. Amen. This is the photo portion here, okay? We got you a nice resolution framed and all of these things, so anyway, I'll let you. Your wife won't come up here and make a close up?
I'm not in any hurry. Stand up there all day.
I'll have to apologize. You're here on a night that we're going to be up and down quite a bit, but it's okay. So we appreciate, again, Pastor Nikki Waters. And moving then into our item 1B, which is our recognition of retirees this evening. And so I guess in no particular order, we've got several here with us this evening. And Randy, where are you, Randy? Come on up. Ashley, you coming with him?
Uh, sure, absolutely.
So Randy served with Caldwell County Economic Board there in the marketing and business and development coordinator for five years. And so he is another Randy. He and I often have that conversation when I would go over to the EDC. He didn't know a lot of Randys existed before he came to Caldwell County, and now he's ran up on several. So, but that's our claim to fame, I guess. But he's also a wonderful photographer, and so he makes a lot of beautiful pictures. And so I appreciate him and everything that he's done for the EDC and keeping us online with our business and development. So we got a clock, and we'll come down and present you the clock so you can enjoy retirement by watching time.
Mr. Chairman, while you're coming down, if it's okay, I'd like to just personally thank Randy. When I started, Randy was pretty much it in the office. We had Bobby White, who was there part-time, two days a week, but Randy was holding down the fort for Caldwell County Economic Development. And I may have been his supervisor, but he taught me a lot. So I really appreciate Randy and not only his professionalism and his conduct at the office, but his friendship. So congratulations, Randy, and your wife Ellen, on your retirement.
Congratulations. Will present you this clock in recognition of your service with Caldwell County Economic Development, Marketing and Business Development Coordinator. Yes, sir. Step back right here, Will, see if we make pictures. Another one.
Ellen.
What?
All right. Shandell Watson, are you here? You are. Bless your heart. So Shandell's next on the list, and Anna Cook, I've gotta get used to that, is coming, which is our Caldwell County Health Department Director. And Shandell served seventeen-plus years at Caldwell County Health Department, and I'm sure you served somewhere before that and just went through all kind of stuff to get to the end of the road. But we certainly are very happy for you to be able to get to this point in retirement. And so y'all come to the podium. We're going to come down and give you a clock so you can watch time pass by as well, right? My worst fear is dropping one. Congratulations. So I'll let you hold it. You got any family you want in the picture? I saw somebody.
If they want, if they want to, they can.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for all your service.
I just want to thank her for her service, um, Shanda for a very long time. She was in quick amendment to add in management support, and she's done a fantastic job. So I don't really miss her, but congrats.
All right. Over here in the camera, so land behind the curtain till we capture us. But we have with us this evening a retired sheriff deputy, Mr. Adam Minor. And I know the sheriff's here this evening as well, so Kevin Bean, if he wants to come up and have a few words about Adam. I know Adam was a school resource officer at Happy Valley, and I know that he has certainly been a part of that community and that school and administration there as well as many of the children there. And so, but it is our honor to be able to recognize you this year for your ten years of service at the Caldwell County Sheriff's Office. And so Sheriff, you got anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, you stole a little bit of my thunder there, Chairman. How many people is here with Adam that knows Adam? Okay, the rest of, I want to tell you a little bit about him. He's been an impeccable deputy sheriff ever since I've been at the sheriff's office. He has been a member of the sniper team, but most importantly, he's been a school resource officer. And I spoke with some of his children at his school, and he's touched many of lives. You don't realize how much a school resource officer touches children's lives, because some of them, they don't have guidance at home, and he's the only person that give it to some of them. You've touched many a life, and you'll continue touching many a lives, and you'll always be a member of the sheriff's office and will always be your friend and be here for you. So I'm going to let the chairman present you with your clock.
All right. Do y'all want to come a little closer? They're going to turn you around and make you face the crowd. I'll try not to drop it for you.
There we are.
Anybody else in this picture, Ash?
Yeah.
All of them. Yeah. I think push in just a little forward, and that way we can all.
All right. Y'all ready? Three, two, one.
While we all are all standing up there, would anyone like me to take a picture of you? While we've got you all comfortable there, we'll just, one, two, three.
One, more.
There we go. One, two, three. There we are.
Congratulations.
All right, our next victim. George Durfer. George retired from the Emergency Services Division, EMS, paramedic, a captain, shift supervisor, and he had twenty-four years of service with Caldwell County. So George, come on up so we can help you pass the time by watching the clock. Y'all want to say something? Mr. Key?
I do have to say that I've had the pleasure of working alongside or for George and with George for, since two thousand and three. And if you look up a definition of a servant leader, that's who you're going to see. Whether it's been an instructor, he's instructed how many years of?
Two minutes.
Yeah. So we, I've took classes under George at a very young age. We've talked together. We've went on instant management teams to the eastern part of the state for weeks at a time. And like I said, true definition of a servant leader, we appreciate you very much, and we look forward to you coming back part-time.
Yeah, you can't even ever leave. Well, we got you part-time. And it's just simply George Durfer, shift supervisor, captain, four, one, two thousand, eight thirty-one, two thousand, twenty-four. Thank you. So picture time.
Okay.
He's got a wife back there.
She comes closer to you. Don't have to zoom this far.
Sorry, guys. All right.
We got you shadowed, boss George. This should be just about every patch. So we've got all of this, and we want you to have this too.
Thank you.
All right. And I do want to mention Susan Barnett with our Department of Social Services. I think she's unable to be here this evening, but she had thirty-seven years of service with Department of Social Services. She began in nineteen eighty-seven and retired in June of two thousand and twenty-four. So let's give her a round of applause. That's a long time, and we certainly appreciate all of our retirees and the service that they have had for our county and taking care of our county citizens. So thank you once again. I want to mention this evening, we got, we've got several guests, I guess, with us, but Captain Cooper's here with the North Carolina National Guard, and we just want to welcome you, sir, and thank you for being here. Jeff Cardwell has told me that you have worked pretty, pretty hard there at our, I guess, our receiving warehouse and
He's in the EOC with us.
And he's in the EOC, and then the National Guard, several of those folks have filled in at the ninety thousand square foot warehouse that we currently have almost full, I think, and still shipping things out and bringing things in as a central point for the western part of our state. So we just want to say thank you for everything you're doing there and helping that run smoothly. And so we appreciate you being here tonight, taking time to come and be with us. So I'll give you a round of applause. All right. So next is a presentation, restart this evening. We got Jason Powell, and he's going to bring some updates and testimony, testimonials, I assume, so.
Thank you so much, Chairman. All right. So today, what we'd like to talk about is kind of a fiscal year review for Caldwell County restart. We just got done at the end of September, being able to report to the state based upon our North Carolina opiate memorandum of agreement and the strategies that we have adopted and gone through here. So this is kind of a quick overview, and then kind of midway through, I've got especially someone that I want to bring up and have her speak to you guys. So just a quick overview of, again, through Caldwell County and the North County opiate settlement and the MOA and the strategies that we've identified here in Caldwell County. Number one is our post overdose response team or port. You'll see that throughout the presentation. Number two is our naloxone distribution, and then the third is the evidence-based addiction treatment, which corresponds to medication-assisted therapy. So again, for fiscal year of twenty-four, just these, these numbers are for that timeframe. So for our overview, so referrals come in to restart from all sorts of different areas. Again, we're identified as an overdose response team with emergency services and responding there. But as you can see later on, we literally get referrals from anybody and anywhere. If it's from DSS, if it's from the Health Department, if it's from our local law enforcement that just call and say, hey, I have someone that is looking for some help, we don't say no. We don't say no. So referrals to restart for that fiscal year were four hundred and ninety-one of those. Out of those four hundred and ninety-ones, those referrals, not every one of those is going to turn into a, someone that is going to seek that treatment and follow through with. But through those four hundred and ninety-one referrals, we've had one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one contacts for those folks. One thousand nine hundred and thirty-one contacts. That's a very large number when you sit there and look at just the four hundred and ninety-one. That three fifty-five are the number of participants that we have connected to a resource. That means out of those four hundred and ninety-one folks that have been referred to us, three hundred and fifty-five of those have been connected to a resource. We know that we're not the end. We're that beginning, that puzzle piece. We're that restart. We're that next, that first step. Kind of down there, it's a little bit small, but our overview of the, our males is sixty-four percent, and females were thirty-six percent. And then the breakdown of our, of our, of our race down there as well. You can see we have elapsed and do have, have, have broadened out from just our black and our white population. So again, through our first strategy that's been identified, the post overdose response team, our EMS overdose calls, there was two hundred and two of those for fiscal year. So this time last year, I stood here and I talked, and there was two hundred and seventy-four of those. So you can see that that, that number has gone down. Response to nine-one-one calls, that means restart in our team. Again, our paramedics and our peer supports actually being on those calls. There's, there were sixty-six of those. That's an uptick as well. Our on-call consults, that's meaning after hours when we're not physically here on duty. We have our peer supports that are on call. And again, we, we go on call to the hospital for law enforcement, you name it. So we've had fifty-two of those, and that's an uptick, and a ten percent uptick as well. Our EMS calls resulting in a peer support contact, and that number has gone up significantly, and I think that's because we've been able to uptick, upstaff. We have more peer supports, and people know who we are now. Before this time last year, people did not know really who we were. We've got, we're out, our branding is out, and we've got our EMS crews are now able got, we're out, our branding is out, and we've got our EMS crews are now able to advocate and kind of push us forward, folks. One thing that we continuously do is our overdose mapping. Again, this is just a quick, quick overview of the overdose mapping. So there, in those, all the dots, that's Caldwell County, so you can kind of see where the overdoses are. The values that are there, there are, there are 204 of those. So again, I said there was 202 EMS overdose calls, but 204 of those, there was actually two that were undocumented. They were calls that came directly to us for folks that have overdosed. They were, they were woken up, they were rescued by naloxone, and they called us first. They didn't call 911. So on there, those purple actually represent multi-dose naloxone administrations. The light green are single doses. The triangles or the squares that you see are actually our fatalities. And we'll talk more about that later on. Naloxone distribution, again, one of the second, the second strategy that we've adopted here are the doses that we've distributed about, about the same as this past, as fiscal year. So with 478 doses, that's a 3% increase from last year. Big one here is the trainings that we've hosted, and that is 23. So those are 23 separate trainings that we have gone either into the, into manufacturers, specific entities, the county. One is, one example, all of our county employees were, were sent through the naloxone training. So that's 23 different trainings that we've hosted. And through those 23 separate trainings, we've trained 865 unique individuals in this county to be able to administer naloxone. And that's a huge uptick from this, this same time last year, that 272%. Our evidence-based treatment, it's our MAT. Again, we're low on these numbers here just because there are many, there are many variables that are going into this, one of which we didn't have our state protocol through NCOEMS till mid-year. We had that, and so we were able to implement that. Our referrals to the medication assisted treatment was 24. Our field inductions, me and the paramedics, we actually induced two folks in the field, and then we've actually been able to help people, two individuals, get their buprenorphine and naloxone or their suboxone prescriptions. This slide is just a myriad of partners, areas that we have been able to, to touch, areas that we have been included with throughout this past fiscal year. Again, Via Health, our MCO here in the county, we've been able to work with them. I know Commissioner Potter's worked with them tremendously to be able to help us kind of broaden the horizons, to be able to figure out what we can do. If we need, we call it a desert ecosystem of substance use disorder. That's what Caldwell County represents right now. And so we need to broaden that and not make it a desert. And Via Health, Health is hopefully, you know, they've been brought to the table to hopefully help us do that. Along with that was RHA. RHA is our FPC, our Facility-Based Crisis Center, where we're able to detox and go there. We have a tremendous working relationship with them. And again, I think if Tracy Irvine was the director here, she would say the exact same thing. We talk almost weekly about that. But our peer supports are able to go in to the facility there to work, to work with people that are there as well as their peer supports to be able to come and interact with ours. NCOEMS, the State Medical Director, Dr. Tripp Winslow, he actually reached out to EMS Division Chief Jonathan Cook about us coming and presenting and speaking at the North Carolina Medical Directors Update. He actually came and visited our county and wanted to see what we were doing here and restart and our model. He wanted to see how we could get this out and to make it sustainable throughout the count, throughout North Carolina. So that's a huge win there for us. Couple of our large events that we put on ourselves is our International Overdose Awareness Day, and then our Black Balloon Day. Again, all of these are representing times to be able to mourn, number one, and also recognize and pay homage to folks that we've lost to, to overdose. ICGH is one of our providers that we're able to bring into the county that we help, that's helping us with our medication-assisted therapy and actually being able to get folks into treatment. They've been a very good resource for us. And last but not least, but the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, they are, they're huge in our space. We've been asked to go and talk and speak. Ryan, our Comprehensive Support Specialist, he and I have gone to multiple times. We actually hosted them here for their One More Thing initiative with our neighbors here in Burke County. So we are, we're very blessed to be able to interact with those folks. So these are some large increases from fiscal year, last year for this fiscal year. Again, those numbers that were previously, it's a 23% increase in our overall referrals. General or self-referrals, that's basically people walking in the door, however that is. 43% folks of that increase. One here is our DSS referrals, and with that asterisk next to it, that's 55% increase there for us. And again, our asterisk there is that staffing collaboration. Kim Arnett, we, and us, we have collaborated with an employee, so we actually have an embedded employee with DSS. It's a half employee with DSS and restart, and I think that's been fantastic, be able to have that liaison and those instantaneous referrals. Our contacts, again, have gone up almost 100, 110% there. Here's where the big numbers come into a place, and this is an area that we, we really need to start being able to look at when we move into, to this fiscal year, is our incarcerated referrals. That's 168% of the referrals that we get, we go into the jail. Again, we don't go in, we don't go in and talk. Folks hear word of mouth. They know that we're there to, as a potential resource for them. That uptick has been going up 168%. Our connection to resources, I think that's the one that we're most proud of, is that 171% increase. Again, going back there, that's 355 folks that we have connected to resources that otherwise, without restart, probably would not have been connected to those resources. Here's some decreases. These are good numbers. There are some decreases that are good. Our suspected fatalities, again, the asterisk was there, and I think most folks know that in the opioid epidemic space is that the state medical examiners are way backlog. We're currently sitting at 10 for fiscal year 23. That's a drop at 17%. So 17% actually accounts to two. It was 17, or excuse me, it was 12 last year. But again, that number can still uptick as we're sitting here. Our EMS overdose calls, those are 202, again, 202 of those. This time last year was 275. That's, that's a large decrease there, about 21%. There's all kinds of variables for why that is. I hope, I think a lot of it, I like to say, is restart, but I think also the, the national attention that the opioid use disorder space is getting. And I think here, out of the three strategies that we've selected and we are able to go after here in this county, we're making an impact where it matters most. It's for folks that don't have that, that voice. There's a lot of times that folks don't know where to turn, and so we become that, we become that hub. We're more than just that overdose, post overdose response team. We're starting to become almost like a hub. People don't know what to do. We like to consider ourselves that 911 for substance use disorder or opiate use. And I think that was, that was noted significantly back when we did the sequential intercept mapping. Many of the folks that are here in the audience tonight were involved with that, that Sims mapping, and restart was in every single one of those touchpoints. When they do the sequential intercept mapping, you're looking for areas of where folks fall through cracks. We were in every single one of those. With our small team of six of us, we're able to accomplish what many, many counties are trying to do with multiple teams and agencies. We're making an impact, and I think the numbers on the screen are great. These, that, these are what a lot of folks like to look at, but then there's folks like Angel Fox. And I may get emotional. There's folks like Angel Fox. Angel's why we do this job. And I'm gonna have Angel and her mama come here for a moment, please. I'm gonna throw out a date. I'm gonna see if Angel remembers what date that is. August 25th of 2022. Come on up here. Do you remember that day?
Is it the day that we met?
It was. It was the day that we met. Do you want me to talk about that space? Okay. This is Angel's second time talking. She was at her International Overdose Awareness Day. Commissioner Potter, yes. So August 25th, 2022, we had not yet identified ourselves as a post overdose response team. I was a community paramedic working, and we had our peer support specialist, Gina, our first one, she's not here tonight. An overdose call came out, and we ran the call, and I was the first one to get to the scene. I was there with Gina as a peer support specialist. Man. Angel presented apneic. She was not breathing, laying on the concrete outside of a vehicle that her boyfriend had driven to this location where we met them. Angel, for all intents and purposes, was purple. She does obviously not remember any of this. Because without intervention, she would have died right there that day. Okay. This is Ms. Regina, her mama. As you can see, she is still here. That was a very, that day is a huge day for, not only for her life, but also for our lives with restart. Gina, our peer support specialist that day, she determined that she was going to become an EMT as well. So not only does she a peer support specialist, but now she's wearing that hat as an emergency medical technician as well. So because of your unfortunate day, we now have another EMT here in this county. That's not the only time that we've interacted, is it, Angel?
Nope. Y'all are really stubborn. I'm gonna put it that way.
Can you say that again?
I said, y'all are really stubborn.
Very stubborn. We're persistent.
Yeah.
We're persistent in what we do.
Every time 911 was called, they would show up, no matter where, wherever I was at. I was homeless a few times, and they would just show up. You know, they wouldn't push themselves on us. They wouldn't, you know, make us feel uncomfortable. They felt, they made us feel welcome, like they were, they wanted to help. And I literally wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for them. Because as continuous, you know, pushing their way in, it just, it made me feel like I had somebody by my side. They didn't become, you know, somebody that I had to go to to get clean. They become somebody that, I mean, they're my friends. They're like, I come to them for everything. I go to meetings now. I take my medicine, my suboxone, and I know who to call whenever I'm in trouble or if I need help, or if I feel like I'm gonna fall back. And it's these guys. They don't, you know, they don't just do their job. They, they put their whole hearts into it, and they care. You know they care because I'm standing here today, and I couldn't, I couldn't do it without them.
You said you were homeless before, right?
Yes, I was homeless twice.
Can you maybe just share quickly what you're doing now?
I'm a cardiovascular sonographer. I work at Fra Hospital.
All right. And so that's Angel, and then obviously, we, here's, here's mom. I just, Ms. Regina, just to say a word.
First of all, I want to thank God.
Amen.
Because if God didn't have her, I wouldn't. And second, restart, they are family. And if it hadn't have been for them giving Narcan, just something to start that life-saving process until they could get to her, I don't know where we would be because I've outlost her I know of three times.
Way more than that.
That's all I know.
That's all she knows, but way more than that.
She was gone. And I could have been one of those parents that got the call that I was gonna be burying my child. Praise God, I'm not. My heart goes out to those that did. But I thank God every day that she's in church with me, and she's working. I'm so proud of her. But if it hadn't been for restart, we wouldn't be standing here. So I support them 100%, 110%, because each and every one are family, and they are willing to help at any time. It don't matter what day, what time, they're willing to help. And it shows. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
There's one small thing she left out, Jason.
Tell me.
Angel, would you like to share the, what other, what has happened to you since all this took place?
Oh, yes.
What's happened? Now I'm confused. Oh, yes.
You got, you got saved and baptized.
I got baptized September the 15th.
That's why we do this work. If we hang our hat on the angel foxes, but that, that's, that can't, like, these are, these are the, that's the high-level win. 355 people connected to resources that ultimately maybe not, would have not been connected. Those are wins as well. We need to be able to measure those in, in a different temperature, so to say. I mean, if we could have all of the angel foxes in the world, yes, that would be fantastic, but I'm never gonna work myself out of a job in doing that, unfortunately. Again, thank you so much for all the support in the crowd here. There are many, many people that I have come to be close with and be, work with over this past fiscal year. Thank you for all your support as well. And thank you as well, commissioners, and obviously Donald as well. If there's any questions, I'll take those if you'd like. If not, that's our QR code for the audience. That goes to our Facebook page. We're social media gurus. Actually, I'm not, Ryan is, if you know him, so.
He's the queen of Facebook.
That came from the commissioners.
I get paid for it though.
You do.
That's pretty good.
Thank you so much for the time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Keep up the great work, guys. We're very proud of y'all.
We certainly appreciate it.
Proud of you too, Angel.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and telling your story.
Yeah. Before Ben starts, I want to give the folks an opportunity that are here this evening. We don't want to make y'all sit here for an entire meeting, okay? We're gonna get into some weeds and some stuff, so if there's somebody that would like to ease out, this would be a great opportunity for that, and we appreciate you. You can pick us up on Facebook, I think. We're still broadcasting live on Facebook. So go in the parking lot, pick it up. Now, I wait one second. There's somebody else here that we need to recognize.
I think he's leaving with the crowd, maybe. He's back there in the back. If you want to mention Dr. Bajol, all of his support. He's been a big supporter in this, and the sheriff has allowed them to get into the jail. That's been a big help, too.
Yeah. So Dr. Bajol, where are you at?
Ed, is there anything you want to say?
We're gonna give you the microphone, sir, if you, if you have anything you'd like to say. Donald made me aware you were here, and I apologize for overlooking you earlier. So it was a big crowd tonight.
Just don't give him a hand, Bill. Send him a bill.
I'm tired to speak at all, but I'm so impressed with what the restart community does.
Yes, sir.
I'm in the process of trying to get more physicians to treat people that have addictions. There are very few in the county that do that right now. I've always looked at addiction as a chronic medical disease, and it's a very difficult disease to treat. But you can see the success, you know, if you actually get somebody to get proper treatment, and it's, it's, I tell people, you know, we always talked about, it takes a village to raise a child. It's gonna take a village... a village to raise a child. It's gonna take a village to solve this problem. And it's gonna take everybody in this room and, you know, the healthcare professionals, the hospitals, the ER people. But we've made some progress and I think ten from, ten years from now, uh, things are gonna look a lot different. Um, and I've just hoped to maybe have a small part in making that happen. Um, there's a lot of stigma out there about what this disease is all about and we're breaking that stigma down one patient at a time. Uh, the churches in the area have been really helpful. Uh, I mean, it's just, there's so many positive stories that, uh, we could all tell. Um, and, and our failures are so devastating. They affect people for the rest of their lives. Um, and we just need to keep trying, you know, one patient at a time.
Yes, sir.
And the support that, uh, you folks can give us, uh, is really important. Um, and I guess that's all I'll say for now.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for all you're doing.
All right. Next, we have a presentation of the homelessness response team. Ben Willis is with us this evening. So, welcome, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. Um, hard act to follow, but I think it really kinda feeds in really well to what we're doing. I think the doctor, um, hit the nail on the head when it really does take a village. And that really is what we're trying to do with the homelessness response team. So, um, the homelessness response team was established, um, about a year ago. Um, and so, uh, this is a newly formed team. I'm just gonna kinda go over kinda how we were formed, what we're doing and, and what we've done to date. And, um, I'll go through this, uh, pretty quick. First, first and foremost, um, my name's Ben Willis. I am the Community and Economic Development Director for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. And I think it's important to kinda note why the homelessness response team was kinda formed and to, to kinda be housed under the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. You sorta need to know what the Western Piedmont Council of Governments does. So, we're one of sixteen regional councils in North Carolina. There's a council of government in every county, right? So, every, every county in the state is, is housed under a council of government. And we're in Western Piedmont. So, we, we cover Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba Counties. So, those are our four counties and, uh, so Caldwell, of course, is one of our counties. Uh, we work with all the municipalities, all the cities, all the towns, and each one of those is twenty-eight municipalities. The Western Piedmont Council of Governments offers many different services. Administration, we do, we do administration. We do finance work for several municipalities. Um, we do workforce development. What, why is that important if you're dealing with homeless, right? That's, this girl's right down the hall from us. Workforce development for all four counties, uh, the workforce development board for all four counties is right down the road. If you're homeless, you need to get a job. That's right under our, our, our wheelhouse there. We do planning. We need to know and understand patterns. We need to know and understand what type of zoning and ordinances we need to, we need to adopt. That's down the corner, go down the way, take a left. Regional Housing Authority, you're doing Section Eight housing. That is run through the Western Piedmont Council of Government, uh, for, uh, some of our counties. So, if you need a voucher, a Section Eight voucher, uh, we know how to do that. If you're homeless, you need a home and you're gonna get, if you qualify for a voucher, it's nice to have that right down the hall. We also have the area on aging. It's amazing how many people that we see out on the streets that are seniors. And, uh, having the resource, so all your senior centers, all that stuff, all four counties, all that fun, all that funding flows through the council of governments. Uh, IT services, data services, data analytics stuff, uh, we, we also have, uh, that is also housed there. So, it makes sense for this homelessness response team to kinda live under this umbrella to, to have access to all these resources that we know that, that it takes for the village to, to come to, to come to pass. So, um, I think a lot of people, when you think about homeless, uh, when you think about people homeless, you've kinda, you kinda have an idea. That person is maybe under the bridge or under the streets on the side. I think that's mostly the stereotypical approach. But we know, and we've heard already tonight, that that is not really the case. Everybody, every one of these folks that are in this position have their own story, their own journeys that have led to that, whether it's a mental health, uh, issue, whether it's an addiction, or it could be just people down on their luck and on hard times. Everybody's story is a little bit different. Uh, and so, that's what our homelessness response team is, is meant to do. Um, the main, uh, one of the impacts that we're due is, uh, or the, one of the main, uh, issues is, is to, um, effectively navigate homelessness, homeless individuals to local resources and engage them in outreach in the, into the communities that we serve and the local governments we serve. So, what we do is, when we have our team, um, our team engages with folks like Jason and his team. And we are, uh, basically another tool in their pocket because that's what's in Caldwell County. So, Caldwell County has a restart team. Some of these other counties that we deal with do not. So, you kinda have to deal with the, the resources, the nonprofits and, and the people that deal with homelessness, um, on a town by town, a city by city, a county by county basis. And we try to, we try to connect the folks with the resources that are in their communities. So, how, how are we funded? So, we had the pandemic, COVID nineteen, um, and there was the ARPA. We have the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, this is, um, this came to pass. They passed a bill. They said, we know that COVID nineteen is gonna lead to probably an uptick in homeless. We need to help fund organizations that are out there that need, that are gonna be dealing with this. So, basically, they used, through HUD, which is the Housing and Urban Development, uh, Organization, uh, Federal Housing, um, uh, decided to use the already existing home consortiums. So, there's home consortiums all over the country. We happen to have a home consortium that runs through the city of Lenore. And the home consortium here is, was set up in the nineties, the nineteen nineties. And it happens to be set up for the same four counties that the COG covers. And so, through that home consortium, we fund your Habitat for Humanities. We do a lot of workforce housing, uh, projects. We fund, uh, nonprofit, how, anything housing. We do down payment assistance programs. And we've been doing that since the nineties. Uh, so they said, if you have a consortium, maybe you could apply for some of this funding if you wanted to do it. So, we decided to do it. We listened to our elected officials. Many of you were at the table and, uh, our managers and decided, um, that this is, we were gonna go for it. And we received the grant. The grant was for four point two million dollars and it lasted through twenty thirty. So, you say, oh, four point two million dollars, woo, that's a lot of money. Yeah. It's not a lot of money when you're having to do it for about six or seven years. So, and to start a program from scratch, basically. Um, so, that's how we got the, the money we were awarded. Um, and we're doing something, uh, that nobody in the South, uh, in the Southeast is attempting. So, this is a brand new program that nobody is trying to do. We're really talking, talking about, uh, rural homelessness and rural, in rural parts of the country. It's different from urban and big city homelessness. So, like I said before, we, we listened to you guys and, um, this is sort of the path, uh, this is the path that you guys, you as the elected officials, uh, and the city, uh, managers and county officials, uh, decided that we wanted to do. And what we did was, this was actually, um, put together, uh, based off a model in Sarasota, Florida. Our friends in Sarasota just got hit by Hurricane Milton. So, I actually been thinking about these guys. But, um, these guys presented at a manager's conference. And we had several of our managers in the region come back and said, this is what we need to do. Let's try to do this. And Sarasota has the, what they have, is a hot team. So homelessness, it's a homeless outreach team. And basically, they ran that through the Sarasota Police Department. And they had their own division that went and interacted with the homeless in Sarasota. So, Sarasota was deemed the, the meanest city in the, in the country. And they got written up, uh, they were just throwing homeless in jail. And they were just resting their way out of it. Get them off the street, throw them in jail, throw them in jail. They got sued. ACLU said, you can't do that. It's public property. So, you, um, they had to figure out how to be a little bit more proactive rather than reactive. And so, they came up with this, um, outreach team. And they have police officers that went and interacted with the homeless and said, hey, what do you need? How can I, what, what kind of positions can we get into you? Or, uh, or resources can we get for you to be able to improve your condition? And, um, they went through it and were a presenter, uh, I guess, three years ago. And, uh, after doing, they're, they're kind of one of the, um, the models that are, are being utilized across the state. So, we basically got their model. Sarasota, uh, fifty, sixty-five thousand. Our four counties, it's three hundred and sixty-five thousand people in a big rural area. So, little different, but the model is what we, um, is what we tried to adopt. And they're fantastic. We called them, uh, they kinda gave us the blueprint. They said, do this, don't do this. Uh, we talked to their, their city attorney. Um, they've been great to work with and, um, really helped really get us going. Been the catalyst, uh, since the beginning. Five key principles on how we do what we do. Uh, we, first and foremost, we work for the local governments. You guys are our bosses. You tell us what to do. You gave us this mission. Now, we're going for it and, and we're trying to do what we can. We are, uh, too, very supportive of law enforcement. Law enforcement are the first, they're the first group of individuals on the ground when they're interacting with these. And they have to deal with, uh, a lot of issues when you're dealing with homeless, um, individuals. It could go south in a hurry. And so, um, we're very supportive of law enforcement. We work, uh, regional coordination is essential for effectiveness to help mitigate the problem. We are very regional. Let's, let's work together to figure out how to, again, the village, the village analogy, I think, is perfect. Um, I think we, we, a lot of times, we all kinda get focused on our own little area. I think it's, sometimes we need to reach out a little bit more. And this allows us to kinda pool our resources if we can, if we can think a little bit more broadly about how to, to do that. And that's, that's very important, I think, when dealing with this. These, a lot of these folks are transient. It's not, it's not a Lenore problem. It's not a Hudson problem. It's not a Granite problem. It's not a grand gamble problem. It's, um, it's all of ours. So, we, we all have to work together and be on the same page when we're trying to come up with solutions. Promote best practices, share. You know, if we learn something, we're gonna share it. Um, and, uh, address emerging needs strategically with new services, ensuring a positive impact without worsening existing issues. So, we just wanna make sure that what we're doing is not, um, um, you know, maybe making, making anything grow. We wanna, we wanna try to make a difference and make sure they folks get connected with people like Jason, for example. Who do we serve? We serve the homeless, right? So, those experienced homelessness, those at risk at home, uh, serving, uh, or becoming homeless, um, those fleeing, um, domestic violence or sexual assault, uh, other populations, um, that are on the verge of homelessness and veterans, uh, big, big, big deal. Uh, we, uh, the team has, I'll introduce you to some of the team members in, in a little bit, but the, we have a heart, uh, a soft spot for veterans and children. So, you get, either one of those, uh, we, we really, it's all hands on deck. The how, uh, we, we do a lot of things. Basically, what we try to do is, again, be a, be a navigator, to navigate individuals to the needs that would be best suited for them. So, it's a lot of going in and going out and, and introducing, uh, the team introducing themselves to each other and forming relationships. ID cards are important. You can't get services if you don't have a driver's license and prove your identity. That tends to be a problem that seems all the time. Birth certificate, social security cards, those types of things. Linking folks to housing resources, linking folks to, to rehabilitation services, um, those sorts of things are critical on, on what we do. The why, we're seeing, we see this all over. Uh, we're seeing an increase in, um, in homeless numbers. Um, uh, and I briefly will go over, you know, what is a sheltered, if you're, for homeless people who are sheltered, uh, if you, uh, that means you're kind of in a transitional housing. So, we have trends, we have homeless that are in transitional housing. And then we have those that are unsheltered. So, if you're a sheltered homeless, I think about your DV shelters and that transitional houses like, um, um, oh, gosh, Bethel, yes, Bethel Colony. Uh, and then, um, uh, unsheltered are, I think is what most people think are, uh, those folks that are living in a car or living, you know, under, behind the, behind the grocery store or whatever. Uh, here's more statistics about, um, some of the homeless. First time homelessness increases and that. I'm gonna just skip through that, just so, just for time's sake. And talk quickly about point in time count. So, the point in time count is the, the one time a year count. Basically, it's the baseline for how we determine how many homeless are in our communities. Uh, this is done, this is a federal, federally determined date. Uh, and it is, um, it's, it's kind of the time where everybody comes together and you do, you do the count typically. It's in January. So, when you live in North Carolina, uh, you can see where some of the problems, um, can come about. And we'll talk about that in just a second. So, uh, our team was very instrumental in trying to help, um, coordinate some pit counts. Pit counts have been going on for a long time. And nonprofits around in this, in this county and some of the other counties have, have been doing a great job at conducting it. What we were trying to do is enhance it, maybe take it another step lever, just be, be a help. But how can we help it? We did some training. We helped do a lot of, to help get more people involved and, and understand it. And, and so, and that was good. We, we did a lot. We had a lot more participation, we felt like. We got more people involved. We handed out a lot of stuff and, um, thought it was a, a success. Some of the challenges with doing the pit count, uh, this year, um, was there's Mormon stations in Caldwell County especially, at the time we were doing it, there was a Mormon station, station that was open on the night of the pit count. If you were in the Mormon station, you're not on the street. We can't count you. So, you were sheltered. Um, if, that made it hard to, to document. Um, there was a shortage of volunteers. We have certain parts of the county we couldn't cover, uh, and, uh, limit, limited means of communication. Sometimes, a lot of these folks have, um, uh, cell phones, but sometimes you, they lose it or they forget or they don't turn them, or they won't talk to you on the day of to do the official. So, here's the unsheltered pit count numbers for the past several years. And it's a little skewed. So, um, you'll see the, the, they're, they're kinda color coded. The twenty-four is the purple. It'll be the farthest graph on the, on the right. Um, and, and you can see in twenty twenty, the numbers are low, COVID, twenty-one, COVID. Uh, twenty-two, we're starting to come out of it. And you'll see twenty-three and twenty-four. Now, again, I told you, we have Catawba, Caldwell, Burke, and Alexander. That's our area. But we also include McDowell. Uh, we, as a part of one of the thing called the Continuum of Care, McDowell sort of falls in our area, but we're mainly gonna focus on our four counties for the sake of this argument. As you can see, though, in Caldwell County, the pit count, unsheltered on that one day was twenty-one. That's for the whole county. In Caldwell County, uh, in transitional houses in twenty twenty-four, domestic, um, violence centers like that, uh, think about the shelter up here, uh, the women's shelter, we had So, and then, um, housed in shelters, we had forty-six. So, you add those up, then that would be kind of how many you think we have in Caldwell County. Now, this does not count Bethel Colony. We were not able to count Bethel Colony. And I believe that is about seventy, I believe, members in that. So, add another seventy to that number for transitional, for those that are sheltered. So, that kinda gives you an idea. I think a lot of people think that our numbers, when they see homeless, they think that there's, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds in our community. They're, they're, they're not. There, there are a lot. And there are a lot that we can't count, especially if they're in a car. It's hard to count those folks. You don't know sometimes if they are that way. But, um, but it gives you sort of a baseline count of what's going on. We also conducted a summer pit count, which is some, we were the only ones in the state of North Carolina to do this, the homeless response team. And they, they put it together and did the same count in the summer. And said, well, what are gonna be differences? This is something they don't do. And so, we did it on our own. We got helpers and did it again. The numbers were almost exactly the same. It was, it was crazy. We thought it would be a lot more. And it, it wasn't. We saw the same numbers, different faces. So, this kinda shows that transient mentality that we're seeing in that. And, and hopefully in the future, as we can collect more and more data and we're working closely with our nonprofit agencies, we'll have that data that kinda shows and shows what's going on and how that movement is taking place in the region. Homeless response data from January to September. Uh, we have done twenty-five thousand, um, five hundred ninety-three individual correspondence. And I say we, it's mainly this, this team back here. Um, I always say, I'm just the hype man. Uh, those guys do all the work and they do a fantastic job. We've done, uh, almost twenty presentations. We've got, uh, nineteen people, uh, housed, uh, nine people in detox. Um, we've done twenty-one, um, vouchers, uh, housing vouchers, which basically is going to lead to housing. And , uh, over twenty-six hundred hours of intake of being spent on doing intake. So, uh, we've been busy. Uh, uh, these guys have done a phenomenal job. And, uh, we also have done almost forty thousand dollars of assistance to help people get housed. And, um, uh, hopefully we'll have some, uh, good news to share with, uh, the, our, our counties, our four counties. And hopefully, we'll have some good news to share with the, our, our counties, our four county regions here by the end of the year that we can, that will help bump that number up even more. So again, I said before, we, this is sort of a new, this is a new thing. We haven't even been doing this for one year. This officially started fully operational at the, in January of this year. So we, we've been busy and have really trying to get this thing off the ground. So getting the name out, getting the word out, and the team has done a really great job at doing that. We've got a website, homeless, homelessresponse.org, that is a fantastic resource. That would be a fantastic resources for each one of you, as commissioners, any of your staff at the county, and anybody out there that is interested in learning more. It's got a breakdown of resources per county. So Caldwell's in there, Alexander County's, Burke and Catawba. So you can actually click on your county and find Jason and his team information in there. Or anybody else, depending on if you need food, shelter, clothing, whatever. And it's based on the community that is, that is there. So you actually find the community resources. We did the summer pit count, and now what we're trying to do is wrap up fall. One of the other key things we've done is ride-alongs with our police, several police departments. We've done, how many, we, you giving that number today? Forty, forty?
Forty plus.
Forty-plus ride-alongs with different municipalities. We've done Lenore, I think we've done some in Granite. We've done Alexander. We've, we've done several in Catawba County, Hickory, Conover, Newton, Valdez, Morganton. All, all those folks to ride along to see what it is. And it's amazing how different each police department treats homeless, just ten, sometimes five minutes away. It's crazy, but fascinating. And I, but I think what, what we're seeing the commonality in all of our police and law enforcement is, is that empathetic approach. Some are a little, little tough love, more tough love, and some are not. And this is where that line is. But I think all our law enforcement's doing a great job, and they're fantastic partners and have been from the very beginning. The hurricane is definitely going to affect our numbers and how everything is happening. We, we don't know what that's going to, how that's going to affect things. That's something we're working at. There's a shelter, of course, everybody is familiar with the shelter on three-twenty-one. That's a regional shelter that will probably attract, you know, some homeless individuals. And, but our team is there. We're going to check in every other day to see if we recognize any of our folks that we've been working with and making sure that they have the resources they need. This is a sample of the website that has information. This is just the snapshot of the Caldwell County. You keep scrolling, it will show you all the, all the information about Caldwell County resources that we have. And if you ever, if you see anything that's wrong or anything out, if anybody else there said, "Hey, I don't see this here," let us know. We can update the website. But it's, it's meant to be a resource for anybody out there who is experiencing homelessness or is, is working with a church group or whatever that needs it. This is the awesome, fantastic team that we have that are out there doing it. So you can see right here, twenty-five years, twenty-six years of HUD affordable housing experience, sixteen years of substance abuse counseling, six years of mobile crisis. RHA was mentioned right there, Mr. James Andrews right here. He used to work for RHA. He was the guy, he's the guy that police call when they, they can't handle somebody. That was him. And so, he's on the team. Seven years of public health, five years career coaching. We've got two pastors on the team. Mary Kendrick, she used to be homeless, was, was on the street, was an addict, has been, has gone through the, has been sexually abused and has devoted her life to, to making, making people better. Come off the streets and, and so, Rachel is, she's our young one. She is, is going to grad school to be a counselor and worked at Strong Life in Hickory, Conover there, and has just been a fantastic addition. And Chaymore used to work with DSS at, in Morganton or Burke County. So it is a rock star team. They, they, they do some amazing stuff. And here's just an example. This was the, this is your contact information for anybody that needs it or has, has any questions. Feel free to reach out to any one of them. They'll make sure they connect you. The cool thing about the, they're sort of like Avengers. You know, Chastity is our homelessness response manager. She's, she's right here. Rick Smith, I know many of you guys know him. He's been, he's been great with workforce development. He's, he's got some behavioral health. And then James Anders, who does, a housing authority, was RHA. And then also a minister himself has got a ton of experience and a heart like, like, like you heard Jason say. These guys have it. They, they eat, breathe and sleep this stuff, man. So I believe that's it. What did I leave out, guys? Did I leave anything out? I'm trying to go fast. Sorry. Any questions for?
So, next to the last slide, or maybe the one before that one.
This one?
Your unsheltered number was twenty-three. Where's the end?
On the website?
Oh, the website number?
Yeah, right there. Is that an accurate number that we think as of today, there's twenty-three unsheltered?
This was, right. So we talked about this this morning. So the twenty-four pit count data just, it just was approved in the summer. And so, this website is new. That's twenty-three data. So it's, it's where you're off. So the twenty-four data was?
Okay. What was the unsheltered?
Unsheltered for Caldwell was twenty-one.
So is that saying that there's twenty-one people that are living in the woods?
Yes, sir.
Under the bridge?
That we were able to count.
Well, I was getting ready to say, y'all know that number's not accurate, right?
Yes, we know that.
Okay.
Yeah. But it gives you a, it gives you a line. That, we know that number's not two hundred, right? Or three hundred, or two thousand. You know what I mean? It gets you in a, it gets you in the, it gets you in a range where you know what you're dealing with. If you talk to the police departments, you know you're dealing with. Lenore will say they're dealing with maybe twenty-five to thirty, you know, constantly in, in the city, just in the city. When you go out the county, outside of the county, it gets different, right? So most homeless people are around where the resources are, right? And when you, the further out you get, the further away you are to do that. And that is, when, when you talk to these guys, that's a different type of homeless individual. This out, way out, as opposed to the homeless individual that's closer to the city. A little bit different dynamics going on.
If they're sleeping under, maybe I don't understand. If they're sleeping under the bridge or they're sleeping in woods, what's the difference?
Well, no, no, it's not about that. It's about being closer to the resources, right? And so, you know what I'm saying? So unless there's a church or there's anything else, yeah, that's, that's what I mean.
The resource, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's, you're, you're gonna send your concentrations near your population density areas, and so.
What is y'all's, what do you think your success rate has been? Or do you think you're making a difference in the homeless community? I know it's still early to tell, but do you think you're making a difference?
Yeah.
We're making, we're making a real big difference, I believe. Some of the things that I've shared with Ben is the resources of us documenting the individuals that are veterans or they have other resources. In our region, we have had a lot of back-at-home funds and things like that that other counties do not have, and we've received. I have, out of the several years that I've worked in housing, I've never seen where they have not got the vouchers in these special programs, so like for your veterans and things like that. They have exhausted, they've requested additional vouchers and funding for those during the year. They can do only one time, and they have done that. So next year, when they're getting those funds re-released, they'll see that, oh, they've used additional ten more vouchers than they normally have where they haven't had to ask. So it's definitely being an opening into that door of more funding for us to receive. One of the big impacts with the point-in-time count is this year, it fell on a day that those that receive social security or SSIR disability funds. It came on a day during a week, during the time that we're doing the point-in-time count. And a lot of times, those folks that have those kind of funds, they go to the resource of a hotel for that week that they can find housing, because that's a time that they can bathe, they can have some good rest and, you know, vibe themselves. So that was a huge impact. A lot of us that worked into the point-in-time, we complained. We talked about that that was gonna be a hindrance to our numbers, and it definitely was across the board. And that is why we talked about doing a summer point. And I think with our region, that going forward, we're probably gonna continue to do that, because it's just the need to stay connected to the individuals.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, and that's why we've relied on the professionalism too of law enforcement. You know, the relationships that we've seen our local law enforcement have with the individuals, that has helped us. Because our team, just like Jason and his team, if the individuals don't trust us, then they're not gonna talk to us. And they, they've seen us roll up in patrol cars, and we get out with law enforcement. And we've seen some wonderful professionalism and relationships that our local law enforcement. I mean, our law, our law enforcement from the beginning has set the bar high. And so, I mean, we've got, you know, most of us, I mean, my undergrad is in criminal justice. So I knew, you know, I always worked on the mental health side instead of the law enforcement side. But I knew the professionalism of our law enforcement, but it's, it's shined even brighter through these relationships. And that's helped us form relationships with people, because a lot of times, the population we're working with, they're out there because, you know, as Ben said, they've experienced mental health issues. They've experienced sexual assault. They've experienced domestic violence. They've experienced substance use disorder. They're used to everyone around them either trying to abuse them or attack them or use them. And so, we've got to form trusting relationships, and so that's a big part of what we're doing, is breaking ice too.
Yeah. I, I, I definitely see a big change in the way law enforcement is, is turning. You can see a big shift in that. It's a noticeable difference. And compliments to our local law enforcement and our shares and police departments.
Absolutely.
For jumping on board and trying to tackle this. Only, the last question I got is, is one of the things that, that I've encountered a few times that I've gotten involved with homeless people is you make the encounter. They're willing to get some help. Usually, it's, you know, addiction problems.
Right.
You get them, you get them into detox, you transition them to a six or seven, eight month treatment program.
Yep.
And then they fall, they, they leave there and they, they come back to homelessness.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, it's kinda defeating the whole purpose, right? You get, you, you get them there, and then they fall off the wagon because they, they're put back off, you know, here. One specific person was in Kentucky for six months. Kentucky, that facility brings him back here on a bus. He gets off the bus, he's homeless.
And that's one of the things that this team.
Yeah. So, and that's where, that's where I'm headed, is that then.
We allow us to identify these kinds of situations, which will turn.
Allow us to find funding, solutions for things like that. Because, yeah, I see the same thing. Working in a mobile crisis as long as I did drove me crazy. Somebody go get their treatment, drop them right back off. And sure enough, I'd see them two months later.
This particular one, we transitioned. Luckily, he reached out to me, who we got Restart involved. They got him into Oxford House. He stayed in Oxford House about two months, bought a tent, moved back to the woods.
Yeah.
Because he didn't like the structure.
Yep.
You know, he'd been homeless for eight years. So if you slept in the woods for eight years and.
You used to it.
The mentality comes after a while, and you talk to that big wagon house.
Had some difficulty there alone. And they said the first night he was in a place, he ended up sleeping on the floor in a sleeping bag. Because the bed felt weird to him.
Yeah. And, and it's a sad situation, but that's what happens. They, they actually get clean and get, you know, you see them moving, then all of a sudden, they end up back on the street.
It is. It's, it's tricky. But I think the efforts for these guys, and if I, we come back in a year from now, I think you'll start, we'll, we'll have a lot more information, and then hopefully, a lot more. I think the regional approach is the right way, especially when you're dealing with so many small towns.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think it opens, it opens us up to have more funding opportunities, to be able to go after more resources that, to allow you guys to make better decisions on, on how you guys wanna tackle this. And that's our goal, is just basically just be a conduit of information and resources to be able to help you guys make decisions.
I saw somewhere on here where you, you spent like thirty-seven thousand dollars in transition housing and stuff.
Yes.
Does that come out of that four-point-one million you got, or where does that money come from?
Well, some of that, some of that is, but then some of those are also other resources that we connect folks to. So if there's, if there's another funding resource, so you heard Chastity talk about back-at-home funds. These are funds that are allocated for our region, and we'll connect them to that. And so, but we also have a pot of, a, a small pot of money that we can help maybe fill in the gap for folks that.
Where does that money come from?
That, that, that same pot. Yes, sir. But, but what we're seeing is this is opening the door. Our successes, their successes are opening the doors for these types of funds to come in, to be able to go out. Our goal is to be able to connect it to the nonprofits in the region, in the area, and to be able to, to work closely with them. Any other questions?
Talking about Commissioner Potter's numbers that you're talking about.
Thinking about this, because it is, like James said, it is frustrating. Because, you know, any role you work in where you feel like you help folks. You know, when I worked in workforce with our local EDC and partnered with them closely, and we'd help folks get employed, and then they'd get upset because they didn't get smoke breaking. Be back the next day looking for work again, you know. But it's, but it's the same thing in this. I think, just like our law enforcement community, they might have to arrest someone six times in order to see their recidivism go down. I think we might have to engage someone six, ten times. You know, it might be that tenth time where it hits.
Yep.
Sort of like with Jason and his team, you know, they may not be, you know. But that precious life that stood up there earlier, same way as these precious lives that are out here on the street tonight. If we can make a difference in a handful, then we're successful.
You are. That's right. Y'all keep it. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a resolution in celebrating Veterans Day, and I'll read it. And it says as follows, "Whereas on November the eleventh each year, our nation honors the bravery and sacrifice of the men and women who have served in armed forces. And whereas these veterans have dedicated their lives to the protection of our freedoms, security, and the values we hold dear. And whereas we recognize the courage, commitment, and selflessness exhibited by those who have answered the call to serve, often at great personal sacrifice. And whereat it, it is our duty as a community to acknowledge and express gratitude for the sacrifices made by veterans and their families. And whereas the citizens of Caldwell County are encouraged to come together in remembrance and appreciation for our veterans, both past and present. And whereas we reaffirm our commitment to support and honor our veterans through various programs and initiatives that foster their well-being and integration into our community. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize November the eleventh as Veterans Day, and encourage all residents to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and moments of silence in honor of our courageous veterans." And do I hear a motion? We adopt this resolution this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We adopt the resolution for the Veterans Day.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously as well. So we do appreciate our, our veterans and veteran services. And so, as was already mentioned by our homeless group, veterans and children hold a dear place in our heart, trying to get them in a better place. And so, we appreciate all that they have sacrificed for us. So that brings us to item five, which is an item for decision. The Blackberry Homestead subdivision phase two final plat. And Shelley Stevens, our planner, is here with us this evening. Welcome, Shelley.
Thank you. Hope you're having a good night. So as you mentioned, this is for Blackberry Homestead specifically, phase two, their final plat. This is twelve lots adjacent to five they have in phase one, which has already been approved, and that's adjacent to DOT Standard Road. And the applicant for this is Patrick Warren. He's a PE and the development manager of Blue Ridge Mountain Club. And I believe he said he was gonna be here tonight as well. Yeah, there he is. So he's the applicant, and the owner is an LLC, Muscox N.C. LLC. And the location of this is off of three-twenty-one, so Blackberry Road, off of three-twenty-one, which is very far north Caldwell County and east of three-twenty-one. And so, part of this subdivision is actually in Watauga County. You can see the line there. And so, Watauga regulates by law their section, and we will regulate our section. We also have zoning, whereas Watauga doesn't, for example, so that comes into play. It's all zoned RA-20, which is single-family residential and agricultural uses only. And so, that's the zoning there and in the surrounding area. And the total acreage we're looking at tonight is fourteen-point-oh-two acres in Caldwell County side, and then six-point-two-two acres in Watauga side, again, which they will use their subdivision ordinance standards for that portion of the plat. And the total subdivision is with phase one and two, it's twenty-four-point-five-nine acres. And again, there are twelve lots here, and then there were five approved in phase one. And the smallest lot size is still pretty large, it's three-quarters of an acre, point-seven-five of an acre. And then the largest lot in these twelve is two-point-four-two acres. So they have a range of sizes, but all of them are large. And then there's common space. You see on the western part of the plat there, on the southern area, that long parcel, that is actually all common space as well. And then they also have a fire turnaround. And then they also have a fire turnaround there near the cemetery, if you look in the middle of the subdivision. And so, looking at everything required by the subdivision ordinance, we see if, you know, they've met all of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and take it to the planning board. And at the time of the planning board review, they did still need a few minor items from the subdivision ordinance and also some major ones. The minor were just the dress and telephone number of owner and telephone number of all responsible parties for the plat and subdivision itself. Also indication that DOT standards are being used. And a typical street cross-section shown on the plat here, DOT street cross-section. So people can see, if they look at the register of deeds, you know, what the DOT standard is exactly. That's required. And so, they did add that. They also added a note that the subdivision adheres to all adopted transportation plans. And we do have a regional one that they had to look at for that. And then they added the total acreage of the entire phase two to their plat, as well as the linear feet of streets. And the major thing they needed at that time was their bond for their road. So they have gravelled the road and they needed a paving bond that meets all the requirements of our subdivision ordinance. At the time of the planning board looking at this, they do have their electrical in already under their 45-foot right-of-way, DOT standard right-of-way there. And they have fiber in already. And everything looks good after the storm as well. There is a bridge there. Everything has been built out properly. I mean, nothing flooded or anything like that. Looks very nice. And so, they have gotten their bond in and both David and I reviewed that very thoroughly. And it does meet the ordinance requirements. And they had a third-party engineer also attest that their bond estimate is correct for their improvements to pave the rest of the road. And besides that, they just needed to turn in their $310 for subdivision review, which they have. It is not expected that this small subdivision would have a substantial projected impact on area schools. But we do have someone actually with the COG, Taylor Dillinger. He's not here tonight, but he works for the Western Pima Council of Governments and has a school growth estimation model that he created and he uses to help us estimate how many new kids in school a subdivision might bring. And so, since this one is thought to be mostly predicted to mostly house retirees, it's anticipated that at most the subdivision would generate two additional students. And he says at Happy Valley Elementary School and one student at High Brighton High. And then looking at water and sewer, we always do that for the subdivision ordinance requirements. As many rural counties, we don't actually offer sewer, so they will use septic systems. And Patrick has noted that they have designed layouts for all the lots. They haven't filed them because they don't know how many bedrooms will necessarily be on each lot yet. But they can file those. They have those ready. They did a soil analysis probably years ago at this point for the general viability of the soil for septic. And they also have well placement on the plat here as well. And public water is not available to the site per our subdivision ordinance requirement. If it is available, we require they hook onto water. And.
Shelley, I got a question there. Do we require each lot to have its own well? We're not trying to do a community well in our.
They do have suggested community wells here, but they also are allowed to have their own well on every lot.
Okay.
If they want to do that. Yeah.
Learn something.
And then it's also not gated. They have their sign out there and that's all part of phase one. And the planning board's recommendation is approval of the final plat contingent upon receipt of those items that I mentioned. And they have submitted all those to the subdivision ordinance standards. So they're recommending approval of the final plat.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions in reference to this? I'd like to follow up someday on that well thing.
Yeah.
I don't know. I guess my big question would be, how do we dictate how many gallons per minute that well is going to flow to, how many homes is it going to feed? So, I mean, it's one thing to say we're going to put a community well up there and put 10 houses on it. It's another for all those people to be able to get their water in and take a shower at the same time.
That's very true. They are supposed to serve, per the applicant, 24 people per well. And it should be overseen by DEQ, but they also can have individual wells on their lots. And I don't know if Patrick might have more information, but I'm very happy also to.
Yeah. It just may be one of those things we need to look at, maybe doing in our ordinance to make sure there's enough water flow for that kind of thing. So. And I guess everything's been perk tested or you've just done an overall soil test?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Patrick Ford.
Yes, sir.
Engineer. All of the lots have been tested, but you don't file for your actual permit until you submit with your house.
Right.
Because some houses may have three bedrooms, may have four. I died five in five bedrooms. They have built houses on three of the lots, on the front five lots that are already on the road. They've already sold one of those houses for $850,000. And they've got a second one under contract for the same price and a third one at $695,000 that's a two-bedroom. So those are three bedrooms. So all of the lots have been tested by private soil scientists. They're based out of Asheville, but they've got local guys that do wastewater management.
It sounds like you're going, the housing there is going to be north of half a million each one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd say it probably won't impact our schools too much.
Uh, no. It's, no, no, sir. I don't think so, but.
Yes, sir.
The, they are, that's why we want to bond the pavement. We graded the road, we got the gravel. We got temporary gravel down.
Right.
The bond is for asphalt and gravel. So to put new down, well, they want to build the houses before they pave the roads.
Right.
Because this is, these are lot home packages. Anticipated tax value of the land itself is probably 125 to 150 per lot, you know, tax basis. But I don't see it going down in value from 150. But there'll be predominantly two to three-bedroom houses.
Yes, sir.
And in case of your wells, the health department does look at the capacity of the well. You have to have, it's a point, it's less water, more storage.
Right.
Right? More water, less storage.
Right.
When you're serving those, a private well can serve up to 24 people.
Yes, sir.
And how many lots there's, I'm not exactly, I wasn't involved with that.
Right. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
He makes a point, though, and I'd ask this question. He just said that they're not going to pave the road until the houses are built. So that means we'd have to wait on all 12 houses to be built before the roads paved?
I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
Reggie Bray is one of the partners that's not here tonight.
They're required to be built within one year.
Yeah, I was going to say, the subdivision ordinance actually, he didn't mention that, but it has a timeline in there.
Yeah.
And then the bond as well is there.
Right.
And we might need to come back and extend that bond if, you know, I don't know what, is it good for one year or two years, sir?
The bond isn't timed at all, but the ordinance does.
Yeah, the ordinance does. So we may be coming back. I don't know what their schedule is exactly. They've already got, they've built three houses started a year ago. So they want to keep building and just build it out.
Very well, but we just need to make sure the road gets paved at some point, right?
We ran into a problem with that several years ago.
Yeah, we sure did in another development that they kept kicking that can down the road. And we finally had to call the bond to get it done. So.
I remember that because I recommended it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just for me, if I'm paying 850 grand for a house off the road paved by my house, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've lived on a dirt road, too. It's not fun. So, all right. Yes, sir. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this subdivision as has been presented? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Blackberry Homestead subdivision phase two as presented. All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we inserted Republic Services letter into item six. So I know we have a young lady here with Republic Services, so.
Good evening, Chairman Church and Commissioners. My name is Tracy Nestor. I'm the Senior Area Manager for Municipal Services for Republic Services. And I'm here tonight to ask for a capacity increase specifically to address the additional volumes that we are receiving due to Hurricane Helene.
You're currently receiving almost double our daily average capacity. And you have an excess of about 100,000 a year that you're under capacity. The issue being is that our county doesn't have a tremendous amount of storm debris. Ours is limb and leaf debris, as you well know, mostly. We have a few houses that have debris, but it's our neighbors to the west that also use this landfill that are sending more and more debris every day. So the recommendation is to allow this to happen, an increase in the tonnages during the state of emergency or a set time. The request is for up to 12 months from this date. And in your contract, your host agreement, the Commissioners have the ability to move that number, if it's a temporary basis solely upon you, without having to go back and renegotiate the contract. And it's in for such emergencies as these. So.
We've been a partner with Caldwell County for over 20 years. This is the first time that we've asked for this exception. If there was a little change in the way that the contract was written, we really wouldn't even have to be doing this because you guys have been so far under the annual capacity. If we just go back to 2020, you guys are actually 400,000 tons below capacity. So this additional volume that we're asking for is really just to kind of meet our responsibility to DEQ. But it has to be less by you first.
And so, that's 100,000 tons additional we're asking for for the next 12 months?
Well, no, you're already under that 100,000 tons. So you're below the threshold, your daily threshold. What's happened is that because of the storm, your average daily flow is going up, but you're still probably going to be under your average annual flow. But the contract.
Annual number's under.
Correct.
It's the daily flow.
It's the daily, yeah.
Correct.
So you don't want to be, they don't want to be in breach and we don't want to be in breach of our host agreement. So what we're asking for is a temporary relief on that cap while we're under storm conditions.
And the other thing, in the contract, let me get back to that, is that we're only allowed to roll over one year. So while I have showed you cumulatively, it's been half, almost a half a million tons. The problem that is that we only get last year's underage to go towards this year. So we don't have that five years where we're already under.
I think you would set a condition that because of the state of emergency, we're allowing this to be helpful to our neighbors, conditioned upon approval by the state, allowing this to happen. Because if there's a permit from DEQ, they've communicated that they would like to see this happen. So I don't think it's going to be a problem. And you also get the advantage of additional revenue as well. But that should not be a factor that you would consider in this.
But it's also supporting your neighbors. We actually had to do this in Haywood County when they had the flood last, I guess it's two years ago. Fred, and they took up about 50,000 extra tons that year. And DEQ gave them an exception for the storm debris.
And we don't have any way of knowing how long that state of emergency will be in place, right?
No, sir. I expect it to be a long time. So what you could do is set a finite date and say, you know, X months from now, we'll revisit and see how it's going. May not need it. May be worse than we thought. As roads continue to open up, we just don't know about how many homes have received damage. So I think if you want to say a 12-month or state of emergency, whichever is longest, or if you want, which is what the request is, or if you want to shorten that to six months and revisit. But it all should be conditional upon approval by DEQ.
I'd like to go to six months on this.
I would be comfortable in six months and then revisit.
So we can reevaluate in March?
I hope you understand that it's nothing personal. It's a matter of, you know, that, this landfill is always extremely controversial. Always will be, always has been. And I just talked to Donald this weekend on the issue that I had. I got a complaint there and I hope we've got that addressed. Is this who you talked to?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It was very disappointing to hear that type of stuff taking place, creating a burden on our citizens. So appreciate you addressing that. So.
Well, our promise to our customers is, you know, partnering with our customers to create a more sustainable world. And we support that promise by five values. Safety is our first.
Yep.
We have had, we've had some serious issues with people trying to get into landfill with not wearing the safety vests and hats. That is a requirement by DEQ. That is not a Republic thing.
Right.
I will say this, we usually have those there available for them to buy and use. We, I would say, given the volume that we've had and plus vendors coming from all over in there, that's probably one of the reasons we might have been low on that as well.
Well, this person was actually turned away and had to go, had to drive all the way to Lowe's with a load of stuff to buy a hat and a vest to go back. So.
I don't know if he asked the question. I don't.
He did.
And they said that we didn't have any?
He did. He said that y'all had quit supplying them because nobody was, they were checking them out, but won't returning them.
Okay.
And y'all had quit, you were stopping that process and that the citizen had to provide her own hard hat and vest, which is, the average person don't have one of those.
Correct. If you also read our contract, we went through some very, I would say, critical operational processes to prevent citizens from going into the landfill. That's just not a safe thing. Landfill is designed for commercial trucks.
Correct.
And so, the way that your contract is written, everyone in the county gets free residential waste. So there is no charge for that.
Right.
But the definition of that is that it has to come through your convenience site or it has to come through a commercial residential truck. We have, I guess, been letting other, we've been letting regular trucks come through there and that's really not a part of the contract. And we have just started evaluating that because of our exposure of free tons coming through just to make sure that everything is to the letter.
I guess my argument is that from time to time, you guys request us to step out and help you. All we're asking you is to be good stewards, be good to our citizens and don't put them through additional burdens. Even though it's in the contract, and I know what you're saying, you've been doing it all along. Unfortunately, when you let them do it all along, they become used to that. And then when you change it and you change that requirement, which is what it sounds like has happened, then it becomes something new to them, you know?
Um, okay. Fair.
How much longer is this contract for?
Till 2038.
She brings up a valid point that we may have to address in my experience with the convenience sites. If they do stop everybody from going in the landfill, then we're going to have to make an avenue at the convenience sites.
Yes, sir.
Amen.
We showed up, I had some folks call me. They showed up Saturday immediately after this storm. I hadn't really said anything about it, but our site attendant said they were only taking anything in a bag that day. Bagged trash only. So they turned them away and told them to go to the landfill with their dresser that was messed up, you know, whatever. So it turned into being an issue with that on our side, on the convenience site. So if they're going to stop us from being able to have people go in the landfill, and I'm cool with it either way, it doesn't.
Yeah, it didn't matter.
But we're going to have to make an avenue for people to be able to get rid of their garbage and.
Furniture.
Furniture and couches and bed mattresses and everything else they're throwing at our highway.
That's right.
You're exactly right. And like I said, we're not prohibiting people from coming into the landfill. It's just that they are required to be safe.
The person that spoke to me about it, he didn't have a problem with wearing the hard hat and vest because he's worn it in the past, but it was given to him here. It was checked out. When you leave, please return this, and he did. So that's all we were saying is, if you're going to require them to have it, then y'all should buy, somebody should provide it to them, whether it be us, you, somebody. They shouldn't have to go buy their own hard hat and their own vest to go into the landfill, is what I'm saying. That should be provided to them.
But I'll agree with her on a point. That landfill's a very dangerous place to be.
Oh, it is. Extremely dangerous.
I got sent up there one time, couldn't put my garbage out at the convenience site, and a guy gets out of the compactor up there and comes over and says, "What are you doing in here?" And I said, "They won't let me put my trash down at the foot of the hill," so.
So we need to work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's on us, you know, and-
It is. It is.
And it didn't matter. I was a county commissioner either, by the way.
I just done what the guy said do, took my stuff to the landfill.
I think that this board of commissioners has made a big effort in improving your convenience sites, but we're not finished yet. We need to continue that process. One of the opportunities that we have is that beside the landfill there, at the Surrall site, is land that could be harvested for burden, for more landfill covered, and then we could turn that site into a much better and safer drop-off point that would handle more of these bins, like what we're talking about, and keep people out of landfills. That would be a much safer alternative. And we have a design on that project. We just don't have a cost yet, and we need to negotiate price and get a hold of that property. I think it's, I can't remember, eight or nine acres or something, but we would only need about half that to be able to produce a better and safer-
Yeah, and you were talking about that at one point, which would allow our citizens to be close to the landfill to get rid of that stuff, but still be able to get rid of it.
It'd be better for us, all citizens in, in our contract.
Yep.
And I just want to say that you think Republic's a big company, of course. I grew up in Alexander County. I live in Catawba County. I went to App State. My brother was the first sergeant in the Highway Patrol here for the last 10 years, and just retired two years ago. This is my home. This is my community, and I'll be here. And we should be talking to you every year in this manner. Is that my time up?
No, you're good.
Okay. And I would like for us to work on solutions at the convenience site.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we've got to do a better site on our side.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, sir.
Are we allowing white goods at the convenience site? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
It depends on, would you have a bin at one location?
If we got a metal bin, a kind of refrigerator go in a metal bin? I'm not sure.
You can hook it in there.
If you can get it in there, it'll go.
The white goods is separate. You don't have to go to the working face. You don't actually go into the landfill. We have it right outside of the landfill.
I found that out. So, yeah, you can take refrigerators and all that in a separate section at the landfill, and you're not going up in there.
There's a requirement.
So the building materials really is what goes up into the landfill, right? Yeah.
Yeah, or old furniture.
Yeah, old furniture. So to your point, if you can figure out another site to put that, then you can separate it from, yeah, I got you.
Getting to the hat and vest thing, could not folks check them out and maybe leave their driver's license there, and then when they, when they get done, they know they're going to have to get the driver's license back, and then they check back in the hat and the vest? I know a lot of places do that, when you check out things that are of value, or people will take and not return. I don't know what kind of burden that would put on Republic. I don't know if people would want to do that, but, you know, just a thought. I've done that-
I think that's a great idea, and I can come back to you with a policy for that.
I mean, as long as you let people know, and they're not going to leave without their driver's license and-
Yeah, and if we have to supply that to Republic to be able to do that, I'm good with that, because our residents need the opportunity to be able to do it, so.
Yep. I know, like at NASCAR, when you check out the headsets, you got to give me a driver's license. You can't get it back till you, you know, turn that thing in.
Yeah, you got something of value handed out. You'll come back.
That's exactly right. It will.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anything else? Any additional questions?
I don't think so. Jeff, you good?
I guess somebody needs to make a motion that we-
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, capacity increase shall last as long as the state of emergency reigns in effect in no event less than six months, and then we can come back and revisit. Is that sufficient?
Always that, right?
Yep.
Yep.
And subject to DEQ approval.
And subject to DEQ approval.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. So thank you, Tracy.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your partnership.
We know we give you a hard time, but we appreciate you taking it.
Listen, the fact that I got out of here before, waste is never first on any document. And the fact that I'm out of here before midnight is a blessing, so thank you.
If it's any consolation, our next item is the tax man. So he's-
We just forgot about you, Tracy.
He's behind all that. So, but we do have advertised for a public hearing tonight on our tax revale of 2025, as required by general statute. So I'll declare the public hearing open, and I don't think we had anybody signed up to speak during the public hearing, and so with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we don't have to take any action on that. We're just checking a box, at which point I think, Josh, you said you'll be coming back to us in another month with something else, so, all right. So everybody good with that? Very well. We move into the next one. Cager's Mountain Interlocal Agreement. Ashley Bolick's with us here this evening. I see the mayor, Ronnie Setzer here. Randy Fearbene, the manager there at Cager's Mountain, and so we appreciate you all coming tonight. So, Ms. Ashley.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here to request an approval of a revised interlocal agreement between Caldwell County and the town of Cager's Mountain regarding the development of 1901 Conley Springs Road. So in summary, this project started in early 2023 and aimed to build a new Emergency Medical Service, or EMS, base, to better serve the southwestern Caldwell County area alongside a housing development that would support continued growth for that community, which is a critical need for housing. The EMS base will be housed in the remodeled former UNC Healthcare Medical Office, which will also serve as a training center for emergency services personnel. So beyond providing decreased emergency response time to a growing part of the county, this project addresses a critical problem, the need for more housing, as I just mentioned, and this is critical for our citizens of Caldwell County, as well as essential for continued economic development and growth in our community. So the challenge, I'm sorry, it's a challenge that can't be solved by private developers or government alone, but through a strong partnership with partners like the town of Cager's Mountain, again, thank you to the Cager's Mountain mayor and manager for being here, as well as private entities like Moss Marlowe Building Company, John, who's with Moss Marlowe, who's here in the audience tonight, I thank them for being here. So just a couple key points of change for the, for the new recommended interlocal agreement, the base. So building on the original interlocal agreement from April 2023 that the Commissioners approved at that time, this project continues the commitment to establish an EMS base in Cager's Mountain, and the base will enhance our emergency response capabilities and serve as a training center for our EMS personnel. In addition to the EMS base, we're working to increase housing supply, again, a critical need in Caldwell County. The county will transfer the remaining parcel of land behind the EMS base to the town of Cager's Mountain, which will contract with Moss Marlowe to build houses. 20% of these houses will be reserved for public service workers, helping to address both a housing affordability and recruitment and retention issue of key employees that our employers so desperately need. So what we have in front of you tonight are exhibits in the interlocal agreement. We have two different conceptual designs. This first conceptual design is calls for about 45 market rate housing units. This is a little different community in Caldwell County with a center green space, but it provides for more high density. And the second option is probably for around 30 homes. That goes more with the contour of the topography there. Instead of a straight street, it'd probably be kind of a rolling street, but would provide for the green space instead of the center of the development. It would be along the, outside of the development with a walking trail there around the green space and the retention pond. And then here is a conceptual design, could look something like this. We took a trip up to the coves on Friday, where those houses are a little bit more Craftsman style. It might be more Craftsman style than this more modern contemporary look, but this project does highlight the importance of collaboration between both government and private partners. The county will provide right-of-way of access for roads and utilities, and the town will work closely with Moss Marlowe to ensure that the development aligns with the approved site plan. This partnership is vital to addressing housing shortages and creating sustainable growth in our community. In closing, I would just like to again ask the Board of Commissioners to approve this revised agreement. Again, you approved the original agreement in April, so we've just added a few things to it, which I've outlined here tonight. This agreement will strengthen our emergency services infrastructure and address a critical housing need that we have here in Caldwell County. And again, thank you for your time and consideration, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to be sure the county don't have, as far as us, we don't have any involvement, because I don't think it's right for us to pick out houses for any certain person to live. I don't think it's right for no government to say, "What's going to happen when somebody, some EMS person comes here and buys this house, and two months later, their husband's split up? Have they got to sell this house back to EMS person? How does this work? I mean, how does all this, you know, you say you're going to save a house? Are they going to get a special rate on the house? Or they get, I mean, what's, how does this work?
A lot of those agreements, we worked out between the town of Cager's Mountain, because once the land is transferred to Cager's Mountain, it'll be up to Cager's Mountain to enforce these, these conditions. So the developer, Moss Marlowe and Cager's Mountain, will work through these, these questions in their developers' agreement.
I just want to be, I just want to be sure the county is not involved in deciding who-
We're transferring the property to Cager's Mountain. We're getting out of it.
Yeah. I don't want to be involved in saying who can, that's like socialism, when you say who can live here and who don't live here, you know, to me.
All right. So do I hear a motion that we go with the amended interlocal agreement that's been presented here tonight, which is transferring the property to Cager's Mountain, town of Cager's Mountain, and so they can then go forth and do what they need to do?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We give that to them and let them decide what to do with it.
All right. Pretty well spoken.
As a whole partner.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. Next is a resolution for conveyance of surplus property to Cherokee County, and I'm just going to get down to the crux of it, and as I read this resolution, but whereas Caldwell County owns personal property in the form of automobiles, a 2009 Ford Ranger with a VIN number, and as well as a 2011 Ford F-150 with the identifying VIN number, these vehicles are currently utilized by the County Animal Care and Enforcement Division, but will soon be taken out of service. And whereas these vehicles will have Caldwell County removed from the striping and all that, retaining the drug, dog boxes that are currently installed on the back of the vehicles, and whereas general statute 168-279 authorizes the county to convey real or personal property by private sale to a nonprofit corporation if the city or county is authorized by law to appropriate money to the corporation, and whereas Caldwell County agrees to convey these personal properties for the sum of $1 each to Cherokee County Government for the intended public use of this property in the service of all Cherokee County citizens, and if these personal property items are to be sold or otherwise disposed of, all proceeds are remitted back to Caldwell County, or the vehicle may be returned and disposed of by the county. So now therefore, let the Board of Commissioners resolve that the county manager is authorized to execute all documents necessary to convey title to the aforementioned personal property with the caveat that all proceeds generated from the sale to be returned to Caldwell County, and the county clerk shall publish a notice summarizing the contents of this resolution. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution this evening?
So why are we doing this? They just need it, and we don't need it, or is-
Yes.
Is the time's bad up there, or what?
Their, their board is not as, well, it's an adversary relationship with their sheriff's department, and they are, their citizens are asking for more and more services for animal care. Richard Gillen, our animal care director, is on the statewide board, and that's part of his territory. So the sheriff reached out to him, Sheriff Smith, reached out to him and said, "Hey, can you help us with some stuff?" So he met his obligation as part of the state board to go and visit with them, then reached out to former Sheriff Allen Jones, who is also the sheriff's representative for the Sheriff's Association now in his new role, and they asked if we have any vehicles that we're getting rid of that are for animal care, that if we would let them use them. So that's their request, because they have no funding provided for that, for any kind of animal care vehicle.
So, and generally, this resolution's the same thing we're doing for volunteer fire departments.
Yep.
Where we're bequesting them those vehicles to use, but if they turn around and sell them, they got to give us the money. So I guess it's just been an extension of being a good neighbor.
We've done something similar with other police departments. We've had sheriff's patrol vehicles that have come up available. Most recently, I believe it's the town of Hildrebroek we donated to earlier this year, so, and Brookford. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah.
So you're in a fortunate position. They're already miled out and yeared out for us, so they're going to try to get some life out of them.
Any other questions? Or do I hear a motion we adopt this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as read.
All right. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. So that brings us to our consent agenda, and Mr. Donald Duck and the county manager.
Yes, sir. Number 10 is a budget amendment to show additional revenue in occupancy tax for the Chamber of Commerce. Just as a background, in 2022, you collected $258,000 annually. 2023, that went up to $280,000, and the most recent fiscal year, 2024, that went up to $297,000. So we're just adjusting the revenue coming in, but it's a pass-through that goes to fund the Chamber of Commerce and part of the ADC. Number 11, budget revisions for scanner purchase for scanning department. Our scanner is about had it. This also gives us the ability to scan in building plans and things like that, and we have a lot of old plans that exist here in the county for our purposes that have not been scanned in, so it gives us a larger document scanner to be added to our annual service contract with SISTEL. Number 12 is code enforcement abatement funding, so now that we're doing minimum housing code, and we have these houses that are falling in, dilapidated, have been burnt, they have to be demolished, and a lot of times, we can keep finding the property on them, but it's hard to get blood out of a tournament, so in order to satisfy our citizens, we will take those properties and clean them up, and then we'll put a lien on the property, so once it's sold, the citizens will eventually get their money back. Library grant funding, so this is an additional $6,000 that has came into the, from the state, and a remaining, I'm sorry, an additional $79,000 that will come to the library in the new budget year, and a remaining $6,000 that was left unspent, for a total of $85,000 to be transferred into the library fund. Granite Falls Middle School project interest earnings, this closes out that multi-year project, or capital project, in the amount of $25,000. That will be left to be spent on any other proceeds that the school would deem fit for. And then you have the reappointment of Ron Abernathy to the JCPC, and the appointment, the new appointment of Ms. Nicole Huffman to JCPC, and an approval of fireworks application for the town sawmills that will be happening this weekend on October 19.
All right. So hearing the recommendation of the manager, do we have any questions? And hearing none, do I hear a motion that we adopt the consent agenda, as has been presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda, as the county manager's presented.
All right. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All, say, everybody in the grid, say aye. All right. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening.
A reminder, I'll be off most of next week for medical procedures, but I'll answer phone calls and stuff.